We are ready to begin our work session on parks, recreation and open space and capital plan. Kathleen Otto, would you please introduce this session?
Of course. So this was a request that came to council last week from public works. And this is to go over the pros plan and the CIP update. This is a timely work session as I believe it needs to get in front of the council very soon. And it's my pleasure to introduce Rocky Houston, a division manager for this area. So I will hand this over to Rocky. He'll present the work session this morning.
Thank you, Chair, councilors. For the record, Rocky Houston, Division Manager for Parks and Lands Division over here in Public Works. With me today, hopefully assisting as well, will be David Stipe, our Planning and Development Manager, and Kevin Tyler, our Lands Manager. The pros plan is a requirement of the Growth Management Act, which requires us to develop a capital facilities plan that is integrated into the county comprehensive plan. Clark County Code requires us to bring this forward to you in this phase here for a work session, then on for, I believe, March 15th potentially for adoption. In addition to that, we have the Recreation Conservation Office, which requires a six-year strategic plan, which they call the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. So this pros plan requires, allows us to meet both of those requirements and allows us to apply for grants from the state to help offset our capital requirements. And the overview is, we're going to talk about our planning process and the plan refinement process. We went through our public engagement process, review of policy concepts, goals and objectives we identified, and review the capital plan itself. Next slide, please. So the pros plan followed a standard planning model where we go out and do data collection. So this occurs prior to going out to the public. We hired a consultant to assist us with the plan, the public outreach and survey. We completed an online survey, and then we reviewed state and other local plans on recreational needs, trends, and all that regional information to help inform the pros plan. The kickoff began at an opportune time for us to flex sort of our public outreach muscles. Due to COVID-19, we had to do it all virtually. So we went out and made an emphasis to really try to connect with groups and get a robust representation from the community individually, in small online sessions like this. And a second survey was then completed to gather that information and refine it, stuff that we would typically do in a public meeting. The themes came out is that, as you probably know, we have 95 county park and natural areas and almost 10,500 acres that we manage. 69 of those are focused on urban recreation sites, and 41 of those are regional focus sites. And the residents use our parks. 91% reported visiting at least once a month, and 89% rank our upkeep as excellent or good. The other thing that we identified through the themes is that the population continues to grow and the diversity is changing. So from the last pros to this, we identified a 38% increase in communities of color. And then the plan, of course, is what you've been presented and had an opportunity to look at and we'll be talking about today. Next slide, please. As any plan is being finalized, there is a balance of resources, needs and interests. We've tried to develop the pros plan to take these three elements into consideration. And as such, some elements of the plan are placeholders to capture the interests, but may be difficult to achieve given our operational capacity. Next slide. So our outreach strategies were increased significantly in regards to our limited capacity to reach out in person. And so we are, we use the website, social media, email campaigns, online presentations, flyers in parks, one-on-one interviews, flyers at fee booths. We found that through our first survey, we had a significant increase, I think almost 2,600 respondents for the survey, and our follow-up one was almost 1,000 respondents. So we wanted to really ensure that we did everything that we could to get out and connect and lengthen the period of the time as well to how that happened. Next slide, please. So eight planning goals were identified through the planning process. We'll cover all eight and the objectives. I won't go through every point, of course, but at least highlight those. You know, goal one, next slide, please. I guess I, that was goal one, I apologize. So goal one is partnerships. We want to forge and maintain strong public, private and nonprofit partnerships to support our park system. Now, next slide. Goal two is communication. We want to promote and market our park system. There's several ways to do that listed here. Next slide, please. Goal three is developed parks. We want to provide a diversified system of parks, trails and open spaces that contribute to the high quality of life for our residents. Next slide, please. Goal four is trails. We want to create a seamless trail system. Goal nine. Slide nine. Goal five is natural areas. We want to conserve significant natural areas for the benefits of the community and wildlife. Next slide, please. Goal 10 is heritage. We want to help preserve local heritage to reflect the county's identity. Next slide, please. Goal seven is equity and access. We want to support and advance diversity, equity, inclusion and access to our parks for all residents. Next slide. Goal eight is operations. We want to maintain and improve the recreational experience and protect our current assets. Next slide, please. So when we were going through and looking at our current level of services based off of acres per thousand residents, and we're looking at a potential transition from within the Greater Clark Park District to a distance from a park. And in the plan, you'll see that we've got a three-mile distance as a standard for community parks and a quarter-mile distance for neighborhood parks. And the, next slide, please. So this slide here shows you how we rate based off our current level of searching for acquiring property within the Greater Clark Park District and developing those acres. You can see here that six acres acquired is the combined for community, neighborhood and natural areas. Currently, we're meeting that 89% overall. However, we are lacking it in natural areas from an acreage perspective as well as in neighborhood parks. When you look at the development side, you'll see that, again, that 4.25 of that six acres is to be developed, and we're meeting that standard at 60% in the community parks and really the neighborhood parks is that smaller area. Of course, you'll see natural areas are omitted from this area because those are not designed to be developed. Next slide, please. So this is a map that was created to kind of create a heat map to make it easier for myself and the public to kind of identify where we need community parks. So this map identifies where you see colors, and the darker the color is, the farther away from a community park. So this is a three-mile radius. So as you look across all the districts within the Greater Park, Clark Parks District, you'll notice that there's just a couple key areas where there isn't a park within three miles of a resident. When we contrast that with the next slide, you'll see that when we look at it from a community or from a neighborhood park level, that you're seeing a lot more color on there. Again, this allows us to prioritize those areas to try to identify where we would need to acquire parks. I will note that this only is, heat maps only based off of our Greater Clark Park District assets, so it doesn't encompass other assets we may own or other jurisdictions' assets within here. So we have regional parks that are located within here or other parks that are a management agreement with the school district. So those aren't reflective in here. So I'm just letting you know is that the color may change a little bit when we factor in all that. But the model we used was focused solely on those Greater Clark Park District assets that we have. And so this, this distance, walking distance allows us to help prioritize those areas and districts and those parks. And some of that is very difficult because there, there isn't any raw property available. So again, allows us to look at these other partnership opportunities. Next slide, please. So if we look at it from that same grading scale of how our current level of service is versus if we went to that walk shed model, again, we're still showing that it isn't all, all roses, that again, that model still provides work for us to do to continue to meet that level of service. It's just looking at it from where people, that proximity versus just a pure acreage. And District 10 is the one area there that you can see the greatest difference in regards to from a walk shed model versus that acres per thousand resident. Next slide, please. So trails were identified as one of the highest, actually the highest desired recreational asset for residents of Clark County. However, within the Greater Clark Park District, we do not have a standard for trails, which does not allow us then to use PIF funds to develop those. And so this is an item that we've got sort of an asterisk on is in the future, we'd like to come back and look at creating a standard for trails and so that we can develop those assets that the community wants. Next slide, please. So this is transitioning to our capital facilities plan and capital plan. So this outlines a six-year programming list by funding source and totals by the categories. This may be different than you've seen in the past and is reflective of trying to communicate and prioritize where we're spending our funds. So preventive maintenance is a project that is smaller and extends the useful life of an existing asset. So that would be mainly, maybe even just painting the exterior, putting on a new roof, those sort of things that takes that public investment and extends that lifelong, which we don't have to then do a major maintenance, which is where we have to do major repair or replace an existing asset. So if we had a restroom that meant, met its useful life, this would be replacing that restroom with a new restroom. The next category is development, and that's where we're actually creating new recreational assets. So we're bringing on a whole new park or a recreational amenity like at Hawkinson, where we're bringing in a new disc golf course. And so that's a whole brand-new recreational asset that's being added to our portfolio. And lastly is acquisition, which is purely just acquiring new property for those things. You can see, acquisition encompasses not only our natural areas through our Legacy Lands Program, but also through our other resources for acquiring. So our objective really is to take, go from a six-year model of looking at this and going to an annual capital planning process. So similar to the tip. And this allows us to be more flexible and responsive to the realities as we move forward. So as our needs and our capacity change, we want to come back and update that plan so that we can meet those needs. And the, our capital plan turns into our capital facilities plans from a Growth Management Act and from the comp plan. So they sort of parallel each other there. Next slide, please. As with the six-year capital facilities plan, the 20-year plan in front of you is consistent with Appendix G, which is in the county's comp plan. And what we've done is look at our six-year and extrapolate that based off of what we, resources appear to look like at those similar levels. It took a little bit of a conservative approach. I will note that the total over 20 years is a big number, but our six-year plan in 2015 had a similar, the same number. So we've really pulled back and tried to be very realistic and conservative as we move forward so that we're setting the expectations where we can achieve. Next slide, please. So for just fiscal year '22 and '23, we just sort of pulled out here a couple key projects to kind of identify by category. So in preventive maintenance, we're trying to allocate $300,000 annually, and that's for pavement, structural and park amenity preservation. So that could be an overlay, a chip seal, a crack seal in a parking lot. It could be replacing a roof as well as vegetation management. And that can be, a lot of that is hazard trees, to be frank. We have a lot of, a lot of our properties, we've got people growing, moving in close to them, building next to them. And so those older trees that weren't a hazard because there was nothing near it now, we're now have to start to, to address those to ensure that we're ensuring everyone's safety. For major maintenance, we've got 1.447 million for fiscal year '22 and 1.67 million for, identified for 2023. So for this year, we've got the Camp Hope Water System improvements that we're currently finalizing our construction plans on, and hopefully we'll be going to construction in the fall to complete that to make sure that those users have a safe water system. We've got the Camp Curry Public Access Improvements. So as part of our RCO requirements, we need to ensure the public has access. And it's been a partnership with the city of Camas. In the past, we'd applied for an RCO grant to kind of do some of that. So that's continues to be a project we're looking at. And the Kleinline Pond View Shelter Replacement. So one of our shelters was struck with a tree a while ago, and this, we're looking to have that completed this summer and replace that to where we can get that back into operation. So the public have two, two shelters, not just one there at Kleinline to rent. Next slide, please. So this is for an index of our development projects over the next six years. As you can see, every star represents a project. I will note that, you'll notice that most of these development projects are within the Greater Clark Park District. In 2005, when we, the voters adopted that levy, I believe is the right term, to create the district, this, there were 35 parks identified that needed to be constructed. And we continue to move forward to meet those obligations that we'd set out back then. So I'll go through each project individually quickly. Next slide, please. So the first project is Cozy Camp. This is a new five-acre neighborhood park that's planned to be constructed this summer. It's in the Mount Vista neighborhood off of 175th Street and 29th Avenue. We just went out to bid on this. They're due in March. Construction should start June 1st, and it should be open to the public by the end of September. The estimated total is about $1.8 million for this project. Next slide, please. Falida Community Park Improvement. So this is a project that's doing two things at Falida. So it is improving the existing gravel overflow parking area into a pavement, you know, a fully developed overflow parking lot. And it's building an inclusive playground to be added in memory of some residents. And it's sort of a community-led effort that's gone on for several years. This project has, is under contract currently with a contractor, and it's scheduled to start in May and should have a, be closed out around the same time of September as a previous. And this is a $1.1 million project. Next slide, please. So Hawkinson Community Park Disc Golf and Trails. So this is in a previously undeveloped 40-acre section on the north, northwest portion of the park. We're developing that 40 acres into an 18-hole disc golf course that will have a pedestrian bridge that go over the ditch, as well as a trail that'll go around the whole property for all users, not just disc golf users, and a small shelter that'll be there again to benefit not multiple users. This has been let. Pre-construction meetings have already occurred, and this will begin in June and again should be constructed by the end of September. Next slide, please. The Harmony Sports Complex Parking and Safety Improvement Project is a partnership between the Harmony Sports Group and the county and encompasses a very large grant and our own, our own funds to improve this. And so this project is currently almost to the permitting phase. We're hoping to have a permit submitted here in the next couple of months and construction to begin in late fall 2022 or spring of '23. This will, is creating a sort of a master plan identifying five phases of construction. This project will only construct Phase One and Phase Two, which will improve a very potholly parking lot that gets well-used into a paved parking lot. It'll also create two entrances. So there'll be the current entrance as well as an additional entrance that'll line up with, I believe that's 13th Street Avenue. I probably got the wrong, wrong letters after that. And, and then they've got future plans out there that we wouldn't be participating in and developing a couple additional fields and expanding that parking lot. Next slide, please. This is the Curtain Creek Community Park Development. So this is a brand-new park that is off of 72nd Avenue, just north of 119th Street. This is currently in the design phase, planned for construction in 2024. This park was acquired for, with the city of Vancouver, where the fire department, it was in the west side, and then the park will be in the, in the passes. You look at the map there, you'll see there'll be a developed portion of the park, which is roughly about half of the acreage. And then there's a natural area that's already been planted and started that mitigation work in the eastern portion of that. This park is unique in that it's going to be the first dedicated rugby field in Clark County, as well as we'll have an additional multipurpose field and standard park amenities. So that was, again, trying to meet the, the needs of residents. And this is currently estimated at about $6.4 million to construct the preferred conceptual master plan. Next slide, please. So Pleasant Valley Community Park is located near 145th Street and Salmon Creek Avenue. You can see us next to the Pleasant Valley School there as well. So this, this was identified in the 2005 obligations for, for new parks. This has not gone to master plan yet. It's still in that pre, pre-circum conceptual phase. We're looking to go into master plan in '23 and then hopefully get this out into construction in '24. This could, based off of supply chain and workload, could, could go into '25 as well. Next slide, please. Salmon Creek Community Club is a new neighborhood park closer to I-5 there, off of 159th Street and 20th Avenue. This project includes the development of a small neighborhood parks or up at the upper level, the high line, and then it goes down into a natural area. So they have a combination of natural area and developed park. This will still require a master plan before we can then go into, through the construction phase. And currently, this is planned for 2025. And next slide, please. Cougar Creek Community Park Developments in, off of Northwest 16th Avenue and Northwest 116th Street. This is sort of the public access to Cougar Creek and the Greenway properties that continue north and south of this site here. This is a currently conceptual phase. Will require a master plan. And this is currently scheduled for 2027, and the estimate right now is about $4.8 million to develop this. Next slide, please. So thank you, and I'll open up to any questions you may have for I or my staff.
Questions from council?
Madam Chair, I have one right away.
Yes, Councilwoman Bichi.
Yeah, thanks for that, all that detail. I really have two areas of questioning, but the main thrust is when you were going through those slides describing the objectives. And then later on, we had a few slides on capital facilities. And our biggest concern, I think, is sustainability and maintenance, even for unimproved trails and very rural parks. Maybe I missed it, but did you have objectives to look at all the funding streams and possibilities, partnerships, volunteerism, to make our park system more sustainable? I just didn't see anything linking our objectives to our capital plan.
Good question. So councillor, I think it's folded into a couple of those objectives. So partnerships is one of those. So I identified in some of those objectives to meet that, that goal. We're reaching out and looking, improving our current partnerships and looking for additional ones, as well as, I would say, in our operational elements. So we're, we're trying to tie in our operational capacity for future development as well as understanding our current operational needs. And so we have a maintenance management plan. That allows us to do a couple of things. So we can clearly articulate what our level of, level of service requires and what those are, and we can communicate what those needs are. And then that allows us to then identify how to fit that in. And other systems I've been at, we have full-time staff that meet a majority of that level. We have adoptive parks that are taking on a portion of that work for a specific park. We have other adoptive parks or hosts that take on other elements of it. And when we try to add all that up, we're trying to get to 100%. It's always tough. But what we're trying to do is look at it that way so that then when we take on a new park, when we're coming to council, we're saying that this is what the FTE requirement is going to be. So we're thinking about what that capacity is and operational capacity is so that we're not just building new elements without any plan to continue to make, maintain those, those experiences at that same level.
So I'd suggest some focus on that, on describing that objective of sustainability, be, get more focus and more direction. And I just, one example, I'd heard at Camp Bonneville, some staff were talking to the group that manages our sheriff's rescue dogs and cadaver dogs. When they're doing training, they were told they were going to have to pay their way at Camp Bonneville. And I think that may have been a misinterpretation of, of sustainability issues that we are talking about at Heritage Farms and other places. So I think we need some focus on that, some real attention to describing exactly what the county needs to maintain our ever-growing park system.
Other questions?
Council Chair?
Yes, it sounds like councillor Lance.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Rocky and staff, thank you for this report, and also definitely to the Parks Advisory Board. A lot of hard work has gone into this, and so definitely appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. One is a kind of a two-parter. There, it's another two questions, but they're related. Can you tell me how many acres of new parkland have been acquired, say, since the last pros plan?
That is a, a good question. I can't at this time. I can look through our, our data and get that back to you. That is a a good question. I I can at this time, I can look through our our data and get that back to you later.
I I'd love to get that when you can. And it relates to the second part of it, which is I'm curious about, say, at the last pros plan, the same goals and objectives came forward, and I'm wondering how we did on that? What in those in that in that past plan remains undone? Like, how are we doing on moving our parks objectives forward? I'm kind of looking for a comparison then to now between the proposed plan and the past plan. And the number of parkland acres purchased is a part of that question?
Well, that's a good question. And again, I I we can take a look at what was identified in that capital plan, what we have accomplished and and summarize that for for you all.
Thank you. I'd really appreciate that. My second question, which is not a two-parter, is related to slides thirteen and fourteen. I'm wondering if you could talk a bit again about the the change to the level of service model, going from per one thousand residents to the distance from the park, what the acceptable distances are between residents and the types of parks? And also, I'd like to just better understand the reasoning for making that transition.
Sure. So the first part of that is sorry, I touched my keyboard and muted myself. Technology. So the distance for a neighborhood park is a quarter mile. And so I can't think of the study off the top of my head, but I know there was work done to look around the nation at that walkability. I know there are some other initiatives that are looking at that. And so quarter mile was identified as a safe distance to walk from your home to a park. So that was the the quarter mile there. And in the to get into weeds a little bit more, we looked at that quarter mile. We didn't identify where we were trying to place a a park in an industrial area. So again, we were looking at the overlays where residential housing is occurring, and again, trying to make sure parks were near people and where you lived. The community parks, that standard is based off of a three-mile radius. Again, that they're larger, they have a parking lot, it's more of a destination facility serving a larger area. And so that three mile to drive or or utilize transit was identified. The the idea is is a twofold is that we can acquire property on the boundaries where no one's at, but really still not hit the need of really trying to meet that recreational capacity. Well, you know, I'm in the memory business. How I create memories is through outdoor recreation sites and and having those close-to-home opportunities is really our objective, especially in those those urban urban areas. And so we're trying to get people there to then get outdoors, play in the dirt, do those fun things that, you know, get those skins on the elbows as you, you know, all those those kind of that lead into good memories. And so with the way that, so we're trying to reflect on where people are living and trying to put that in. We also were looking at park sizes. Currently, we have a a three-acre requirement for a neighborhood park. We have a few smaller than that, but again, trying to look at the potential that flexibility to where we we have a big enough park to meet that definition without having just a a tiny little you know, tenth of an acre, you know, that has one one slide on it or something. And so those are those those ideas and trying to be reflective of as our population has grown and there's less land is trying to be reflective of that density and and try to provide that close to home versus just a an acre. It's easier when it's just an acre per thousand trying to, from a math perspective, but it's really not hitting what we think is the mark.
Thanks. I I appreciate that. And I think that this is potentially a a good transition, definitely going from the just a number in a box and making it more about community members' experiences. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on on the concept there that councillor Lance was asking about. Because it is an interesting standard to be changing and it has implications, I would presume, for available land for parks. And so I'm wondering, what is that impact? And if you could just put aside, if that's possible, for a moment, the the whole new standard on the proximity to the park and think about just the lands that we currently have vacant and available for development for parks. How much land is that that we have available?
Well, that's a councillor chair. That that is a good question. You know, and I think that's one we're, from a recreational perspective, competing with for housing. So there's, you know, I think you've guys have seen, I know it's been in the planning commission, a lot of trying to identify those acres for housing. And our process takes longer. I think in years past, we were able to go out farther than where development was occurring and land bank acquire that property farther out. Unfortunately, within the Greater Clark Park District, developments nearing that that boundary. So there are fewer of those larger parcels to acquire. So it is becoming more difficult and and more spendly spendy as well. So I think it's there's still opportunities out there and we're still continuing to knock on doors, talk to people trying to look at that property. But I think it's becoming more difficult to find that vacant land out there.
Mm-hmm. Well, we hear the the same story with vacant land for other purposes as well. So so we well understand. I'm interested in that transition process from however many acres and all are available right now for for parks that don't fit with the new standard. As you transition to the new standard, how much more land is going to need to be found? And is there a good feeling that that much land is going to be available for parks?
That's a tough question. You know, I think by my moving to this distance from a park versus the the raw acres per thousand, it's not going to make the 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 issue much. It's it's still going to be tough because there are those competitions out there. And I think that also further hamstring is that a lot of our acquisition dollars that we have for parks are within the greater part, Greater Clark Park District boundary. And so a lot of that vacant lands outside that boundary, and that's property that we can't acquire utilizing those funds. So that's a additional restriction is, you know, those boundaries will change and we can, you know, look and go go out to vote, I guess, to change that boundary or something like that. And I'm speaking very, very what-iffy. That's a bad word, but but is but I think it's it's going to be a problem and a tough a tough nut to crack as we continue to move forward. And I think it's just, it allows us, if we're looking at a different sized property, that allows us to fit some properties in that are maybe only two acres or an acre and a half within some of those urban areas where there are, you know, an empty lot to 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 put that into, you know. In addition, some of the wetland areas and other natural areas, you know, I think there would be some opportunities there. Of course, Clean Water is doing similar things. They're acquiring some of those. And so there is a larger portfolio of of natural areas within the Greater Clark Park District beyond just our assets. But I think there's been some partnerships there as well to to continue to try to meet that, some of those needs for that quality of life.
Well, and that leads to my last question, which is, how much land is set aside now by parks for those natural areas?
And it is in the plan. And currently, we have three thousand and twenty-eight acres of regional natural areas. And we have one hundred and twenty acres of urban natural areas. So what's that about thirty-one fifty, about three thousand one hundred?
About, yes.
And and a lot of our regional natural areas are encompassed with our legacy lands portfolio. So those those properties.
Would any of those be buildable for parks?
Some of those could be. And there are restrictions on legacy land properties in regards to what type of recreation we put there, what level of development can be placed on there. So we have done that. So Lower Daybreak, for example, is a a legacy land where we've put a trail and extended on along the East Fork Lewis River. So there are some of those more passive recreations that would would fit into there. And there are some other more traditional parks that could fit on some of those parcels. We have a lot of shoreline permitting and wetland buffers and those things on a lot of those properties. So they are constrained in regards to the the area that we would be able to. But yes, there is an opportunity.
Other questions from council?
Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of continue on this level of service discussion. And can you put a slide, I think it's nineteen? And so I'm still a little bit curious as to how we went from, you know, acres per thousand to walkability. I understand the concept, but I'm curious as to how that conversation got started. And then actually, so so go back, maybe forward, go forward to where we have, maybe one more. Anyway, maybe it's slide eighteen. Sorry, it's the one where you talk about the acres and and the percent there, that one. Yeah, thank you. So I'm curious about the conversation that 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 took place to move toward this more walkability standard. I know that historically, we were talking about acres per thousand and and how we were sort of failing to meet that standard at the time. We're at seventy-five percent, sixty-nine percent. But when we talk now about walkability, we're really failing the standard. And so I'm curious about the impact and pressure that puts on the plan and and the outcome of not meeting our standards. And then also the pressure that might put on the capital facilities plan. And to councillor or Chair Bowerman's point, where do we find this land to build these parks that we say we're short, where we have developed neighborhoods? So I'm a little bit, I wonder why and how we got to already a standard that we were failing to now a worse standard that we're failing. So if you could just address that and then get a couple of other questions, too.
Sure, councillor Olson. And I a- as you all know, I I came on board in July of twenty twenty-one. So this plan was this process was far along. So I'm going to turn it over to to Kevin and see if he can provide any information on on that background. Seems how he was with this at that time and may may have that that information. Kevin?
Thank you, Rocky. For the record, Kevin Tyler, Clark County Public Works, Parks and Lands Division. So the discussion around level of service standard, the way that it's written in the plan today, in the draft plan, is is looking at it from a gap analysis standpoint. So we haven't changed the level of service. It's in the comprehensive plan. And so in order to change the level of service in the comprehensive plan, that's a a whole nother process. So it's written as a recommendation to look at level of service model to make sure that it meets our needs as a community. And the walkability analysis also helps to get at the the gap analysis. Are are our parks equitably distributed? So in this, you know, in this slide, for example, it shows that we're doing really well in some areas and not so well in other areas. And then if you look at it from a walkability standpoint, it it's sort of, it's flipped on its head almost. District ten, we have property plenty. But in terms of walkability, it's not, we're not meeting those standards because, you know, for whatever reason, there's we haven't built subdivisions where we can walk to these parks. We haven't developed these parks, things of that nature. So I think the level of service discussion is something that it's a recommendation in the plan to look at it in more detail and try to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community from a recreational standpoint.
Okay, so we're not really changing. We're just looking at it in a different way to measure some gaps. So that actually brings up another topic I think we've talked about in the past, but I don't know if it's it's addressed here or where we might discuss it in the future is, as as we have new housing developments, I know Ridgefield's done a lot of this where we have smaller pocket parks. And maybe they're not ten thousand square feet, but larger than that, that we're developers as they build those new subdivisions, build those smaller neighborhood-ish sort of parks so that we're not out there looking to acquire land, but we're working with our development community to build livable neighborhoods. So I don't know what discussions have taken place in terms of that that topic, if any.
Councillor Olson, good question. And I think it's it it came out very strongly through the process in regards to a potential change to PIF to facilitate credits. So that was one thing. Again, that's once this plan is in place, that's a whole separate process to do that. But I know we got a lot of feedback and a lot of interest in having a PIF credit, which again, what it like City Ridgefield and other communities are doing allows that. The size of pocket parks were evaluated and there was a a recommendation earlier on in the process. And again, I'll have to turn it over to Kevin where having that different category of park was not recommended. But again, I think it was looking at the size and providing a little bit of flexibility. Currently, the standard for a neighborhood park is three acres or larger. And so there isn't there isn't a little asterisk there saying, you know, approximately or one point five to three. And so I think that was an avenue we were looking at is could we look at it that as a way to provide to meet that 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 need. Kevin, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I I think my recollection of the discussions around pocket parks was in in regards to size. So I'm thinking back to the discussions with the park with the Parks Advisory Board. And they were interested in, you know, making sure that we have something that meets the community needs. That's not just for the 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 residents of that specific subdivision. But then, as we look forward towards, you know, building a credit system that maybe there's like a partial credit type of scenario, something to that nature. But and then again, I think there's a recommendation in the plan to look at the standard for park size. So right now, as Rocky said, it's, you know, it's three acres is kind of our goal for a or three to five acres for a neighborhood park. And you know, I know we have parks that are out there that are smaller than three acres that still meet needs. And and so there's possibility for a smaller level of park that could be developed by, you know, someone who's putting in a a larger subdivision that would meet the needs of the community and the residents of the subdivision. And whether that's a credit or not, credit system is something that we still need to evaluate.
Okay, so so we could even potentially, doesn't sound like we have a definition for a pocket park right now, that that's not in the plan. So potentially, that could be a different category of park that might serve the needs of the local communities and add to that walkability threshold that you were talking about. And then one more, one more, as you talked about PIFs, as it relates to developers and and smaller parks. But we've been having this conversation about PIFs for years as it relates to trails. And so I'm always disappointed when I hear it's going to happen in the future when we've been talking about it for years. So can we narrow down what in the future means? Because this is something I know this community is looking for. And and there's a way to do it. We just have to get the work done.
So, yes. We will work on that right away. Part of that is our staff work and then making sure we can get it into the schedule for for those meetings. So I would say my objective being fiscal year twenty-three, have that as an item that we have hopefully prepared to start that review.
So a timeframe on to start the review in twenty-three, do we have a plan and a program in twenty-three? I think we started talking about this in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
And and I I'm not cognizant of the timelines for each of those processes and steps. So I don't want to, I I that's why I'm I'm being conservative and we're hoping that we would get something to council. And I believe we have to go to Planning Commission before council. So I'm sorry, I'm talking out loud here and I shouldn't be doing that. So that's where, let me look at the timeline and I can get that back to you to where I have those those steps and that's and and get something concrete.
I appreciate that. And I know you can't give me direct timelines. And my, the purpose of that is just to say that I think I I don't, not speaking for the council, obviously, but I I do think it could become, should become maybe a priority to kind of get this done.
Understood.
Bowerman, you're muted. Are there other questions or comments? Are there other questions or comments from council? Um, I am needing some clarification relative to council per se. Um, what comes next relative to this discussion? I'm kind of lost as to um, what follows with the um, the plan that we have seen today and, and where does it go and when do we see it again?
Sure. Um, my understanding of the process is that after this work session, um, if, um, if there isn't any major changes that you would like us to do with the, with the uh, plan, we would um, be uh, coming back. Uh, and I believe right now the tentative schedule is March fifteenth. I believe you guys are working, talking about that later today potentially, uh, or it could be in April. Uh, and that would be with the planning. Planning Department would be bringing that forward as a comp plan. I'm going to get the words wrong. Um, Kathleen will get, help me here. It's uh, the, I'm going to call the, the, the work plan for the comp plan update. I think there's a different terms, but roughly, and then um, there'd be hearing on that date. Um, then you would make a uh, a recommendation. If that was favorable, then a resolution would come back. Uh, I believe it's two weeks after that to adopt, it's a resolution or ordinance to then um, adopt the pros plan and then to set in motion the uh, comp plan amendment for uh, fiscal year twenty-two. And once we have that approved, then we would be able to then work on those other uh, potential items that were discussed.
And that's a, uh, not a rapid uh, movement forward, but i- it, it will be here before we know it. Therefore, I'm wondering, is the intention to stick with the acres per thousand population for now? And have the other information simply available as a gap analysis? Or is the standard going to be changing in that new plan? I wasn't quite sure.
No.
Are proposing there?
Chair Bowerman, I really appreciate that. And, and I, and I apologize. And I think um, when we were talking about the walk shed and that, that level service change, that was a uh, uh, proposal within the plan. So by adopting the pros plan, you would not be changing the level of service. It would remain at that acres per. But in the future, if we wanted to make that adjustment, uh, I think what we were trying to clarify is that we're, we're trying to take this other lens as we're moving forward to um, think about the equity and really how people are using our part parks. And, and if that does lead to a uh, a level service change, then that would be a separate process. And I, I apologize if I, I, I got some muddy water there.
No, no apologies. Thank you for the clarification for me. Are there other questions or comments from council?
Briefly?
Yes, go ahead, Councilor.
Well, we uh, had started to talk about uh, cedars and that conservation effort and got into discussions with battleground. And I do know that there's a, 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 another rural park there that was donated within uh, the city limits of battleground that they're hoping to keep uh, open to the public and fairly austere as a park. You know, we, we're not accounting for uh, city parks in this plan. We're not uh, accounting for a lot of the conserved areas. Uh, other cities like Amboy and Yakult are somewhat struggling with their park planning and, and battleground's just beginning. Uh, the, the moral of this story is we I would heard that we were talking about perhaps a North County Park District, you know, giving some attention to future planning uh, outside of the urban growth area uh, to account for all of those areas that are available for hiking and whether improved or unimproved. Uh, so I, are we still talking about that as far as planning, looking towards more rural areas and incorporating all of these assets that are uh, bound throughout the county?
Counselor, um, you, you, you bring a good point. And definitely we do have a, a two-park setup with Clark County. We have it within our, our Greater Clark Park and our regionals. And um, since I've been here, I have been doing that research to identify the makeup and how we got to where we are. So I think that um, you bring out a, 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 a a good point. And I think um, that would be something I would like to explore further and identify that process if um, i- if there was ability. And, and I don't know how that would be. Is that the expansion of the current park district? Is it a separate park district? There's a lot of unknowns, but that is something that uh, uh, I know my predecessor has began looking at and I've continued to move forward and working with um, the director a- a- and others in regards to setting up that framework that then will lead to a path hopefully to come to, to you uh, all uh, with, for, for a policy direction um, to meet some of those needs. Um, and you know, for every community, ju- if, if those that are general funded for their parks districts, anything to help alleviate that would be, be great selfishly for parks to make sure that provides more flexibility. But I know that, that it's never that easy, that there's compression and other issues in regards to those. And funding is um, is funding, no matter what you call it, it's still is dollars and cents that people have to pay to uh, to, to get those needs met. So it is something we're aware of, I'm aware of and, and want to look more into.
Thank you, Rocky.
Other uh, questions or comments from council? Hearing none. I would thank you uh, for your presentation. It's always good to see new parks facilities being uh, made available or improvements to what exists. Maintenance, all of that is really good to see. So thank you for that. Um, this work session is therefore concluded. And uh, we thank you. So now we move to uh, council time.